Good afternoon, and I will call to order the April 13th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Bender, Slack, Gisselman, and Tucker. At this time, please be sure that your mobile devices are silenced. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the March 30th, 2015 meeting. May I have a motion to approve those minutes? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and that carries. The next thing we'll do is organize the agenda for today's meeting. We'll decide which items will be on the consent agenda, which items we'll discuss, and which items will continue. So I'll start by going through the agenda. Item number one is 4749 through 4751 France Avenue South. That is a party wall split and a duplex. And is there anyone here to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will place that item on consent. Item number two is at 1041 24th Avenue Southeast. That's expansion of a nonconforming use. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will also put that on consent. Item number three is the Mill City High School at 810 7th Street South and 815 6th Street South. That is a conditional use permit. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will also place that one on consent. Item number four is Center Point Energy and Meet Minneapolis signage at 501 through 505 Nicolet Mall. There are several applications there, conditional use permit and several variances. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent as well. Item number five is the Dangerous Man Brewing Company at 1300 2nd Street Northeast. That is an amendment to a conditional use permit as well as a variance. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put item number five on consent. Item number six is Calhoun Square at 3001 and 3003 Hennepin Avenue and 1301 and 1409 West Lake Street. That is a site plan review. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, item number six will go on consent. Item number seven is at 4609 28th Avenue South. That's an expansion of a nonconforming use, a conditional use permit, and three variances. We will discuss item number seven. Item number eight is the Depot Renaissance Expansion at 300 Washington Avenue South. That is a site plan review, and we will discuss that item. And item number nine is the Lockup Self-Storage at 701 7th Street North and 618 7th Avenue North. We will discuss item number nine. Item 10 is North Loop Green, a planned unit development. We will continue that item to the April 27th meeting. Item number 11 is the Brick House Lofts at 150 26th Avenue Southeast. We'll also continue that item to the April 27th meeting. And then item number 12 is a zoning code text amendment pertaining to regulations for a single-family and two-family dwellings. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that one on consent. So the amended agenda is to continue items number 10 and 11. Our consent agenda will include items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 12, and we will discuss items 7, 8, and 9. May I have a motion to amend the agenda? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the agenda is amended. Next, may I have a motion to continue items number 10 and 11 to the April 27th, 2015 meeting? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then, next, let's see. We can move on to our Committee of the Whole consent agenda. And there was one item on the agenda on the April 2nd meeting of the Committee of the Whole. Commissioner Slack, would you mind giving a brief report?
Thank you, President Brown. At the April 2nd, 2015 Committee of the Whole, we heard a report for the location design review of the Nicolet Mall reconstruction and the 7th Street Transit Advantage projects. It was recommended approval of the staff report and recommendation that the both items were consistent with Minneapolis' plan for sustainable growth.
All right, and I will take that as a motion to approve that staff report. Is there a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Next, we will move on to our consent agenda. Again, items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 12 are on the consent agenda, and I will open the public hearing for those items. Is there anyone who would like to speak on items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, or 12? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, we'll move on to our discussion items, and we'll start with item number seven, which is at 4609 28th Avenue South. Staff is Ms. Dvorak. We'll ask her for a short presentation.
This is an application by Laura Gurgich, the property owner of 4609 28th Avenue South. This is in the 12th Ward in Locan Erickson Neighborhood. Laura owns the, or I should say, the applicant owns the four-unit building on the property. It's two units on the first floor and two units on the second floor. What she's proposing to do is to expand the building one level up, so it would become a three-story building. It would have a rooftop deck on top of that. Right now, all four units are one-bedroom, one-bath. The upper two-level units would become two-bedroom, two-bath, with outdoor space on the second floor of the building, or excuse me, the third floor of the building, and then a rooftop deck up on what would become ultimately the fourth floor of the building. There are five applications required for the project. One is an expansion of a legal nonconforming use. Again, this is a four-unit building in the R2B zoning district, and that's to allow the third-story addition. A conditional use permit to increase the height of the building. We're in the shoreline overlay for Lake Hiawatha, and so it is a CUP to increase the height from two-and-a-half stories or 35 feet to three stories or 35 feet. A variance to increase the FAR of the building from .5 to .87, and then two setback variances, one on the north, one on the south, both from nine feet down to 4.8 and 4.9 feet. So very similar situations. Staff is recommending denial of all of the applications this evening. Our rationale for the denial is kind of woven through all of the applications, so I've summarized our justifications for our recommendations, and then I'll move on to some of the more detail. So I just wanted to show you the plan. So the property is located here at 4609. You can see Lake Hiawatha is across the street, and then there's park board land in between. One of the questions in an expansion of a nonconforming use is whether or not a rezoning of the property would be reasonable. On the 4500 block and 4600 block of 28th Avenue is zoned R2B, and the remainder of the area is zoned R1A. So it would be, it would not be appropriate to rezone this property. You would need R3 zoning to make, to allow for the, to allow for the four-unit building, I should say. And we, 28th Avenue is not a designated corridor, so we don't have any comprehensive plan policy to support an upzoning or rezoning of the property. The proposed expansion going to that third level will not, would not be compatible with the surrounding area. I'm going to show you an image that the applicant produced. This is the rendering, if you want to say, of the proposed addition. So here's that third-story addition, and then the rooftop deck area, and that would be access from a staircase in the middle of the building in the front, and both of those decks would then have access up to that rooftop level. You can see that the adjacent properties are all one-to-two-story unit buildings. The proposed building is currently, or the existing building is a flat roof, and it would continue to have a flat roof with that rooftop deck on it. For the conditional use permit, because we're in the shoreline, we do measure to the highest point of the building, so the 35 feet is to the top of that railing on the deck, on the roof, I should say. The overall height of the, of the building is 32 feet 6 inches. So again, the surrounding properties are primarily one and two families. Increase in the height of the building was had a bad precedent in the area, where there hasn't been an impact of taller infill development. In addition to the height not being compatible, the overall size of the structure would be much larger than the surrounding properties, and those required yards would not be met for a three-story building. The expansion of the fourplex would neither improve nor worsen the appearance of the building. It will modernize the structure. The applicant, in addition to the addition, is proposing to replace some of the windows, add the decks that you see or the balconies on the second story of the building, repair the stucco, and then paint the entire building, removing shutters and some other details that would, as I said, modernize the building. But we do feel that this would change the overall character of the area, and therefore we are recommending denial of the expansion. As far as the CUP for heights, the comprehensive plan policies do talk about supporting rehabilitation and reinvestment in the existing structures. However, it does say to do so that, in a way that's compatible with the surrounding neighbors. And again, for the reasons that I've mentioned with the expansion, we don't feel that the addition would be. As far as the additional standards that you have to address when approving or when reviewing a conditional use permit for height, access to light and air of surrounding properties, the property to the north is one-and-a-half story, and the property to the south is two stories. The setback between the buildings is approximately 10 feet between the two. However, going up, that includes the setback of each adjacent property. We feel that increasing that, the height of the building would reduce the amount of light and air, and increasing the height would make the space between the buildings feel more canyon-like. This is the shadow study that was done by the applicant for the properties. So the hatched areas are the areas where you have new shadow, and then the outlined areas are existing shadow from the two-story structure. So there will be additional shadows cast on the adjacent properties specifically to the north and then northwest of those properties. And then as far as solar energy, there are no solar energy systems within the area that would be impacted by the additional shadows cast from the addition. As for the variances, the FAR building, or the FAR variance, excuse me, the additional, or the existing building is already exceeding the .5, so adding the additional bulk would only increase the, the amount of bulk on the site, and so there were no practical difficulties that we could find to support that variance. Similar to the setback variances for the north and side yard, the required setback for a three-story building would be nine feet, and again, the existing building is 4.7 and 4.8 feet from those two property lines, and so increasing the height will not have any, will not change the setbacks. However, it just increases the nonconformity of those setbacks for this, for this building. So for all of those reasons, we are recommending denial of all of the applications before you, and I'll be here if there's any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Gisselman?
Yes, Hillary, just a quick question regarding the conditional use permit as to the height. It indicates in the report that the, well, it, there's contradicting numbers. I think it's just a typo, but the report indicates that the, on page one, that the existing structure is two-and-a-half stories or 35 feet, and the conditional use permit is to expand that to three stories or 35 feet. I think, I think maybe that, just the 35 feet for the existing structure is incorrect. Is that right? Actually, I think on, I think on page three of your report, it says 23 and 1/2 feet. Maybe that's right.
Yeah, so that, yeah, the, the allowed height in the shoreline is two-and-a-half stories, 35 feet, and so I didn't start with where the existing house is.
Oh, I see.
If I can just find my application, I can tell you, the 23 feet, yeah, it's 23 feet 6 inches is the existing height of the structure, and because it's a flat roof, that would be to that, to the, to the roof.
Okay, and just, and regarding, regarding the measurement of the proposed structure, you said that that was to the top of the rail, the proposed railing on the rooftop deck, correct?
Correct.
And I think that you already answered this question, but if the, if the rooftop, rooftop deck were not being proposed, and then obviously not the railing, would staff have a different perspective on the recommendation at that point regarding the conditional use permit? I suppose it would be four feet shorter without the railing than what's being proposed right now. Thanks.
Correct. I think, when the applicant first, the answer to the question is, I think staff would feel more comfortable with the overall height, because that additional railing on the roof does add to the, to the bulk and the overall appearance, and we cannot prevent someone from putting, you know, umbrellas and tables and chairs and other, other things up on the roof that one would expect with a rooftop deck. When the applicant first came in, the addition was larger and closer to the front of the building, and, you know, giving some guidance to the applicant, we had suggested that they remove the rooftop deck and pull the addition back, and they did, or she did, pull the addition back, however, the rooftop deck still remains. I'll just show you a photo. I know you guys have them in your packet, but just to kind of go back to the overall height, Commissioner Gisselman, this is the existing structure, and so to the, to the top of the roof, it's the 23 feet 6 inches. And so the proposal to the top of the roof here would be 32 feet 6 inches, but to the top of the railing is the 35 feet.
And just, just one follow-up question. It seems to me, then, that if we didn't have the railing or the rooftop deck, that would not obviate the concern you voiced regarding the rezoning aspect.
I'm sorry, the, the conditional use permit for heights? I think the, I think the overall cumulative impacts that would be created, changing the character of the area, being a taller structure, being a bulkier structure, all of those impacts remain the overall height. I think because you wouldn't have the possibility of other things up on the roof would, would bring, would lessen the concern of the conditional use permit for height, but it doesn't completely negate it just by eliminating the rooftop dock.
Understood. Thank you. You answered my question, which wasn't very good.
Great.
Commissioner Luke here.
Yeah, I just have a quick question, Hillary. So maybe my math is wrong, but if we add a railing to the top, doesn't that exceed 35 feet then? Because railing by code would have to be higher than 2 foot 6 inches. Correct?
You're right, it should be, but when I scale it out, it came out to 35 feet, so I guess I didn't actually measure the overall.
So all in all, this actually exceeds the allowable 35 feet.
Although we could be, I could, there could be a parapet that I'm not.
Well, they're, because they list 32 foot, unless the railing is below the parapet, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking the, yes, yes. I'm thinking there's a, there's, I would want the applicant to confirm, but just looking at the elevations, I'll show you the side elevation. You can see the ceiling or the roof height.
I wasn't sure if they were doing a 36 inch railing or 42, but anyway, so that's maybe a question for them. And then my follow-up question was just regarding the sun study. Can you just clarify what the shadowing on the south side is of this? I mean, it appears as though there's, there's indications that they're shadowing the house to the south, and I just didn't fully understand why that would be the case.
I'd like to have the applicant explain the shadow study a little bit more detailed, because it, there shouldn't be any shadowing.
Right, right. That's why we were considering.
To the south, just to the north.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just, you know, I just wanted to note that we, just looking through the comments that we've gotten, you know, it looks like the, the direct southern neighbor wrote a letter of support, and a couple of the other nearby neighbors, and then the neighborhood organization, I think, also submitted a letter of support. So I just, I think it probably doesn't change some of the specific findings that you went through, but it sounds like at least some of the direct neighbors are supportive of this project, and I wondered if you'd had any back and forth about some of these specific concerns with the applicants, or maybe the applicant can address that.
I know that the neighbor, the applicant hosted the neighborhood meeting at her house, so people could walk around the building and the property, and as a result of that, as you said in the packets, there is a letter from the neighborhood organization that recommended support of the project, and then some letters came in over the weekend, late last week and over the weekend since our packets went out, that were included in your packets today. But I did not speak to any of those neighbors, I should say.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions for staff? In that case, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. Please state your name and address clearly into the microphone for the record.
Yeah, my name is Laura Gurgich, and I live at 4609 28th Avenue South, unit number four. So I live in one of the upstairs units. Thank you for letting me speak. Would you rather I start with some of the questions that are already afield, or, I have a short presentation also?
Yeah, I think it's fine if, if you want to give a very short presentation, but we probably want you to address some of the concerns raised by staff specifically.
Absolutely, okay. Thank you. So regarding, as Hillary said, there's five applications. The first is the expansion of the nonconforming use. So just to be clear, the building was built in 1929 as a fourplex, very clearly architecturally that, that can be seen inside all of the woodwork matches, et cetera. And it got changed to R2B zoning, and I believe that was in 1999. I don't know if Hillary could probably speak to that specifically. But there is a triplex on the block as well as myself, so we are the two nonconforming use, or nonconforming buildings on the block, and interestingly, we're also the two owner-occupied buildings on the block. The staff report mentions that they believe that the third-story expansion is too tall, and we've had, I believe, if I'm counting correctly, a total of 10 of our neighbors now, six at the neighborhood meeting, people through letters and emails showing direct support for the expansion as, as it's been shown. And specifically, my, our, our neighbors to the direct east of us, our alley neighbors, the Grams, sent a letter to you just last Thursday, I guess it was, and hand-delivered it to the Planning Commission in support. The main reason for the expansion is that the apartments are small. When they were built in 1929, I'm sure they were lovely, like I said, beautiful, architecturally beautiful, woodwork, et cetera, but they're a small bedroom. The closet in the bedroom is literally 28 inches wide, which I'm sure was lovely in 1929, but doesn't work so well right now. The kitchens are small. Some of the rooms have one outlet. You know, just normal updates that we consider necessary now just need to, need to be done. The conditional use permit, as Hillary explained, what's allowable is 35 feet or two-and-a-half stories, whichever is less, is the wording of the code. So I am asking for 35 feet, and it is a full three-story. I have attempted to mitigate that by pulling it back significantly from the front of the building. The south side sits back 15 feet from the face of the building, so from the 28th Street side. The north side sits back 12 feet, so that's what creates the roof decks on the front and, and eyes to the street. And, and then that, the parapet, as Hillary mentioned, is at 32 foot 6. There is, there was a question about the railing. There is a, a parapet, so the roof sets down below that, and it would require 42-inch railing up there for life safety. So that is, it is indeed at 35 feet. The railing on, on all of the railings, I should say, on both the third-story decks and the upper deck, is a real common railing that you see around a lot, and I know several of you are architects. It's basically kind of a hardware cloth wire mesh that's got a powder coat finish to it, so it's really transparent. I don't think the elevations necessarily depict that accurately. I think it really falls back quite a bit. And with Hillary's comments about feeling that the scale was too large, I did indeed drop the roof deck well back. It's actually 22 feet, I want to say, back from the front of the building. So you actually have to be, I did a sightline study that's in your packet, or I have a larger one here. You have to be 106 feet back from the building to be able to see that railing up above. Thanks, Hillary. So again, trying to, trying to pull that back. The staff report did say that the addition is compliant with the, or is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that, again, the, the issue was the height. I also did a silhouette study, which... And I can hand that around, it's in your packet, but the point there is that, you know, the way we perceive height of a structure isn't that we mentally measure down to grade. We see the, the silhouette against the sky. So the building that's at, it's a single-family house that's at 4555 28th Avenue South, so a corner of 46th Street, is a really tall... I'm left-handed. It's a very tall building, a single-family story. I think it was built in two, or a single-family house, built in 2006, and you can see the adjacent property next to it is very, very short. There's actually a larger disparity of the height between these two structures than there would be between myself and, and my neighbors if the third story gets added on. The floor area ratio, just a quick comment about that. If I wasn't in an R2B district, and I am fourplex, it would have to be R3. The FAR for that is 1.0. I'm requesting .87, so I would comply with it if I was properly zoned. And I understand that, you know, this body doesn't want to spot zone, but I'm simply pointing out that with, with the density of a four, a four-unit building, it would be appropriate to have a higher FAR. And then lastly, the setbacks, as Hillary noted, I have 4.9 feet on one side and 4.8 on the other. That's where the building was built in 1929, and no hope can change that. It's, that's where it is, and I really don't feel like it's a significant difference to add the, the third story. We get very strong prevailing winds off the lake, so from the west, so they come straight, you know, straight off the lake, so it's not going to be, I'm not shadowing anyone's property. Again, the Grams would probably be the most affected. So the, the typical tenants of urban planning, you know, has half-density on, on busy streets and on transit ways. 28th Avenue in our block has 5,600 cars a day go by. It's a busy street. There's a bus stop that we all use that's 100 feet outside my front door at 46th Street. The LRT stop for the 46th Street stop is nine minutes. The end of our block on the south end is the Mini- The end of our block on the south end is the Minnehaha Creek Bike Trail, which is just an incredible bike trail that'll take you all the way out west to Hopkins. East, you can stop and have a beer at the Falls, whatever. It's a beautiful, beautiful location, and it's really the kind of location where you want to have density and where you want to be able to have people that don't rely on cars. Right now, there's five of us that live in the building. You'll hear from two. Two people don't own cars, so that's 40% of the people living in my building don't own cars. That's how good the transit is. In the citywide statistics, it's something around 18%. So this, this is a location where I think it really makes sense. Mayor Hodges was mentioned in an article that she wants to grow the population of Minneapolis by 100,000 people without adding cars. This is the way to do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Tucker?
Yes, you're saying that the apartments are a little small. Have you considered converting the four into three and solving the problem that way?
I've considered that, sir, and honestly, I, I would rather keep four units because that's four families that can live across the street from a lake. And to me, that's significant. I'd rather not kick someone out of that space. The, it's really kind of a unique situation also, the 4,500 block and the 4,600 block.
I just want to know if you'd considered it.
I'm sorry. I did, sir, yes.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing no one, we can move on to some other speakers. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Tommy Furlough Jr. I live at 4609 28th Avenue in apartment three, so I'm directly across the hall from Laura. I've been in that building for eight years. I think Laura bought it four years back. Since I've been there, she's an excellent landlord. She does a good job of taking care of the, the actual property itself. She's done a good job of actually bringing the community in the neighborhood together as well. I know a lot of people are saying that the height-wise may be a problem, but the house that Laura had showed earlier, the blue house that is on the corner, in my opinion, seems a lot taller than the property that she's looking to build. Like I said, I'm in the apartment next door, which would be one of the affected units, so if it did happen, I will more than likely end up moving to either downstairs or another apartment within the building, or maybe even outside the building, I'm not sure yet, but I'm willing to do that just to help this neighborhood. And I've been in Minnesota since 1988. I've always looking for areas to get improved. The area where we're at is a perfect area for a family to be at. It's right across the street from the lake. It's right there with the biking trails. There's a lot of things that's there for people. It would be more conducive that there could be a two-family, because then you can actually get a family in there where kids can see it and use it. I don't know, I mean, I can just go on and on. I like Laura as a, as an actual landlord, so I keep pointing that out. But the unit itself, what she, what she's proposing, I think is good, is something that that area needs. The two, two rental places to the left of our apartment, do you know the addresses to those off the top of your head? The yellow house and the... Okay, those two units are not currently inhabited. So we're trying to make sure that we can keep people staying in our neighborhoods. What Laura's trying to do is she's bringing some modernness to the neighborhood. There's a lot of building going on with the light rail coming up, so there's people that would show an interest for coming over in there and that would benefit from being that close to the lake. So my two cents is I think this should be permitted to have happen. I think it would be better served as a four-unit, not a three-unit, which was said earlier, because it allows more families to be in the area. Any questions for me at all?
All right, thank you. We can move on to the next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name's Nick Blake. I live in the, the house to the south of Laura, 4615. My wife and I have been there for almost two years now, and grown very fond of Laura, the applicant, and we're just big proponents for owner-occupied rental properties in that particular area. I think you can see a big disparity between properties that are rented out by someone who's off-site, just as far as the upkeep of the property, you know, basic shoveling, mowing, picking up papers that just, you know, get picked up to the, the two neighbors to the north that Tommy had, had mentioned, and I just, you know, hope that this plan would actually keep Laura in that area, rather than potentially having to, to move out and potentially get some, some neighbors in there that, that, you know, might not take care of the grounds as well as she does. So definitely here in support of Laura's plans. Any questions I can answer for any of you?
All right, I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please come up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Michelle LaPelle, and I live at 4609 28th Avenue, apartment two. I am Laura's partner, and I've lived in the building for just over a year now, having lived about nine years downtown St. Paul. If I could speak to the neighborhood and also a couple of comments that Hillary made about not wanting to set a precedence, or the building not being, the design not being in character with the neighborhood. As Nick and Tommy both mentioned, the two, the two duplexes to the north of us are unoccupied. One has been unoccupied for, I've heard approximately 10 years. The one next directly north of us has been unoccupied for almost a year now. There are at least four home value newspapers littering the front yard. There's a hole in the back of that house with the stocks stuffed into it. So, and, and on the 4,500 block of 28th Avenue, there's a house that has the hood of a car that's been propped up against a tree for the better part of a year. It's a, it's an amazing area to live in. We're close to the trail, we're right across the street from the lake, there are restaurants and bakeries that we can walk to, and what the neighborhood really needs is a revitalization of the homesteads that are on 28th Avenue. And I think Laura's proposed plan does exactly that. It brings, it's in character with the current design of the neighborhood, and it brings an aesthetic that is desperately needed on those two blocks of 28th Avenue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, does anyone have a motion, or are there any further questions? Commissioner Tucker?
I will move the staff recommendation to deny. I can speak to that if I get a second. My motion would be denied, all, all because the project just doesn't hold up. We do have, I'm basing this first on the FAR, which is already over the maximum for the R2B area. This would go much higher, so that sets a precedent for higher FARs in an R2B zone. I think we want to be very careful about doing that here and then not following up on it elsewhere. I am very sympathetic to the idea of, I think this is maybe an example of the gentle density getting a little more housing into the area, but we aren't adding units, we're just making bigger units, and I think the city actually needs quite a few more modest units, so I'm not sure if this moves us in the direction we want to go in, in that way. Then also, we just have these other variances on the interior side setbacks. I know that's not created by the applicant, but it just makes it more and more difficult as we go along. So I, I think, sympathetic as I am to gentle density, I don't think this is the same as, as our reaction has been to other play, other instances where we've legalized triplexes within the existing envelope. This is expanding the envelope in an area where that doesn't seem entirely appropriate, so that is why I move staff recommendation.
All right, and to clarify, Commissioner Tucker, is your motion on all five?
All five. It's either up or down, I would think.
Yeah, okay.
If that fails, then there might be conditions.
Commissioners, any further questions or discussion on the motion? Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I just wanted to speak to this because I know there was quite a lot of support for this application, and I think though the, you know, to Commissioner Tucker's point, you know, the way that the expansion is being implemented here really raises a bunch of different issues relating to our code. And I actually don't have such a problem with the height, but you know, the FAR variance is quite significant, and if, if the rezoning isn't supportable, then it's hard for us, I think, to approve all of these variances. You know, I don't know that, I don't know that a rezoning is totally unsupportable here. It would probably have to be looked at a bigger area, but that may be more of a policy question about the zoning in this neighborhood. But in the R2B, I think, again, you know, the FAR in particular is, is almost double here.
Commissioner Luke, Pierre?
Yeah, I, um, I, my, my gut reaction, I have to say, is to, is to support the motion as it stands, although I did want to say that in terms of setting precedent, I, I do think this is a little bit different just because it's an expansion of a non-conforming use on a block of R2B duplexes. So they're already conforming with the zoning, so the worry that we have, and I believe some, there was a letter that addressed this a little bit, saying they were concerned about every other person on the block doing the same thing and having three-story buildings all over the block. The differentiation, of course, would be that they're complying with the zoning, and this is already not in compliance, so just be an expansion of that nonconformity. So, so I kind of think that in terms of setting a precedent, maybe this isn't as thin of an ice as we think it is. However, there are hurdles in regards to the, the conditions that need to get met and the, the practical difficulties that I'm not sure I'm quite able to, to overcome. I, I do, I am sympathetic, though, to the thought that, you know, this is a really well-traveled street, and perhaps it's an area where more density should be pursued. So I, I almost wish that, that side of that street was zoned something higher, because I, I feel like that was an opportunity for gentle growth, or whatever we're calling it, gentle density, to be added in an area that I think is, is perhaps lacking. So I'm, I have to say I'm on the fence on this one. I'm, I, I, I don't think it'll set a precedent, but I, I'm not sure it is achievable with the difficulties it shows.
All right, commissioners, any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Tucker? Slack? Niffy Pierre?
Aye.
Gusselman?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
So that's five to zero.
All right, thank you. We can move on to, now, the Depot Renaissance Expansion, 300 Washington Avenue South. And we've, we've seen this item before at Committee of the Hall. It's a site plan review, so Ms. Farrar, I might just ask you for a short presentation, and maybe if you could address some of the outstanding issues, that would be good.
The application that's being presented this evening is just a site plan review, and correct, you did see this at a Committee of the Hall meeting, and it was a joint meeting where we had the Heritage Preservation Commission join us as well. The property is 300 Washington Avenue South, and as you're very familiar with, there is a national landmark and local landmark on this property, the depot, and the freight house that are located on this portion of the site. The applicant is proposing through site plan review, and of course, as I mentioned earlier, this has already been approved by the Heritage Preservation Commission, a six-story addition and then an infill addition on the Second Avenue South side, where they're basically removing the water parks that exist and putting in additional hotel rooms that would lead up to the sixth floor. The property is on C3A, is in the downtown parking overlay district and the downtown height overlay district. Currently, there are a total of 351 hotel rooms on the site. They're proposing 110 additional. There are also 646 off-street parking spaces located on the site. They would be removing 42 landscape, the interior of the site, so in essence, when this is all complete, there'll be about 461 hotel rooms and then 642 off-street parking spaces. The reason that the applicant would like to discuss this this evening is specifically in regard to condition three, and what that condition states, we're obviously recommending approval of the application this evening, but what that condition states is that the site plan shall be modified to reflect the following modifications along Fifth Avenue South. And just to reference you to this site, this is a very sort of small site plan, but what I'm going to be talking a little bit about is the treatment of this area here along Fifth Avenue South. I think we, one of the things that I had mentioned, and we had discussed a bit at Committee of the Hall, was the fact that this is a very unfriendly pedestrian environment, and so the idea being that the applicant will work with planning staff and CPED to come up with something that was a much better solution to what we have currently going on in this specific location. The two areas where I'd mentioned that they're proposing to put landscape islands are in this specific location here, so that's the removal of the four off-street parking spaces down to 642 on the site, and then with the below-grade parking that exists under the specific site. So along Fifth Avenue, and this is sort of a blow-up of what you have in your packet as well, basically what exists now is that in this portion along Fifth, this is a 45-foot wide curb cut, and then there's a right-in only, and that is 20 feet wide. So this will kind of set the frame for the condition of approval. And here is sort of a color rendering that shows that basically what the applicant was proposing to do through this application process would be to maintain this southerly curb cut at 45 feet, but elevating the pedestrian walkway and then leaving this curb cut here, which is singular and leads into the site at 20 feet. So basically, 20 feet here, 45 feet here, with a walkway and some plantings in that location. And so through the process, basically what we are recommending on, on this condition of approval for number three is that this curb cut here in this location be reduced to 20 feet, and this here to 16 feet. So that's what this condition of approval states. You do have some information that was submitted by the applicant to your attention. I know you probably had a few minutes to review that before the meeting. And basically, I will let them kind of go through their argument, but what they're proposing as a counter condition of approval is that they would maintain the recommended width of 16 feet for the right-in only, and then they would like to request a 35-foot curb cut in this location, so a reduction of 10 feet in this specific location, so... And then this would basically be what they're proposing to do as an outcome. As you know, in the zoning code, basically what we're allowed to approve is typically a maximum with curb cut of 25 feet, and then we have to have city engineer approval for anything above 25 feet. I did route this plan through Public Works today, and they wanted me to be clearer about a couple of things, just for your consideration this evening, that their preference on that southerly curb cut is to be 20 feet, so they'd prefer to see this at 20 feet. So they are basically in line with the original recommendation of approval in the staff report, but they said they would approve up to 30 feet if you find that the arguments here this evening are worthy of doing that, but they will not approve a curb cut with greater than 30 feet. So again, the applicant is proposing 35 feet. One thing that the, the Public Works Department also said is ideally what they would prefer to have happen is that this would just go away. That's not part of the condition, but having this right-in only go away, and then they basically said they would be happier seeing a 30-foot curb cut here in this specific location. They'd be more willing to approve something in this location that was singular and 30 feet. So I know that's a little bit complicated. I can run through the numbers again. Again, our recommendation is 16 feet and 20 feet. Public Works, again, would be willing to look at going to 30 feet in this location, and it's also possible that if, if you felt that it would be something that you would be willing to do through the condition of approval, is you could eliminate that and allow a curb cut of 30 feet in this specific location. So there's a few options for you. I can answer specific questions following their presentation, but I know they'd like to make an argument as to why they need a wider curb cut.
Right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Farrar at this time? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing for this item, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. And again, since we've seen this at Committee of the Hall, if you could just focus on some of those issues related to the curb cuts, that would be great.
Absolutely. Good evening, President and Commissioners. I'm John
Absolutely. Good evening, President and Commissioners. I'm John Farrar with CSM Corporation. I represent the applicant. Also with me tonight are some operational people from the hotel. If you have questions regarding the operations that I'll be talking about. We also have members of the designs team and the construction team here. I would like to, as you said, talk about condition number three, which is the reduction of the curb cut. You know, CSM worked with Public Works and planning staff to make this a more pedestrian-friendly connection. What we've done is we're planning to revise the driveways, so the pedestrian path is now level as opposed to going up a curb ramp, going down, and going up again. We're leveling that out by increasing the slope of the driveway, and we're also providing a colored concrete pedestrian walk to identify the pedestrian travel. The reduction to 16 feet on the right-in-only is acceptable to CSM. The 20-foot reduction is not accessible, acceptable. We believe this would have negative effects on our business. You know, this development encompasses two full city blocks, and within that two full city blocks, we have two hotels, a banquet center, an event center, a restaurant, and a skating rink. And all of these functions require parking and people to come and go freely. In addition, this is our only point of access for our vehicular traffic. So we don't have a loading dock on-site. We don't have a roll-up door where we take trash out. This is where all services are provided at the site. On a daily basis, the building experiences 389 contract parkers, 230 transient parkers, 88 employees, and 84 hotel guests. In addition, we have events almost every day of the year ranging from 10 people to 1,500 people. On a daily basis, we have lunch meetings and lunch events and breakfast meetings and breakfast events. So as I said before, there's a lot of coming and going. In addition, we have eight trash and recycling pickups a week. We have semis that unload trucks. The right turn only is very important to us because that's where our semis access the site, and that's the only way our semis can back into the shed to deliver for events that happen at the depot rink and at the depot shed. So we really need to retain that right-in-only. As part of my analysis, I took a look at some of the other ramps in the downtown area, and I provided a breakdown. And the way I analyzed it is we are the only ramp that only has one means of access for vehicles. The other ramps downtown, they either have a loading dock, they have separate areas for trash. All of those functions are coming through one entry and egress point for us. One analysis that I did is I took all the ramps, analyzed the number of parking spaces, and then the amount of inch, amount of feet per parking space of exiting each ramp provides. Currently, we are, we are towards the bottom of that list, is providing egress width for the amount of parkers that we have. If we were made, if that entry was made to be 20 feet, the southern entry, it would limit us greatly. We'd only have one in and one out during events on that, on that lane, and we figure that would cause backups. We already experienced backups during rush hour and during events, and it just isn't a workable solution for us to reduce that to the 20 feet. So we're respectfully asking that that reduction only be to 35 feet. We believe that we can still operate and provide two lanes in and one lane out during ingress and two lanes out and one lane in during egress for events. Thank you. If you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Commissioners, Commissioner Tucker and then Commissioner Slack.
Why do you have to have such a large radius on your right-hand turn coming south? If I'm looking at the...
Are you talking about the right-in-only?
Yes.
That was to, mainly to accommodate trucks?
Okay. Is there any other way to accommodate that? I ask because those high radius turn-ins are unfriendly to pedestrians. It gives the automobiles coming in a sense that they have the right-of-way, even if there's stop signs and calming devices. They always think, oh, I can go right on through, and it becomes hazardous for a pedestrian. So if that could be reduced, I think that would be a more pedestrian-friendly solution.
Right. And, you know, we, when this was originally designed, this is the way it was originally designed, and that was designed for truck, truck traffic, so we could get trucks to pull up on Fifth and then back in so that they are, they go into the depot. The entry for trucks on the depot is on the far east end, so we can't take a truck and make a left turn into that. We have to access it by using that right-in-only.
And can a truck come in that way with a 16-foot driveway?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Commissioner Slack.
I guess the first question is, you're, the graphic that shows the truck turning movements is showing truck turns coming into the depot shed area as a forward movement, not a backward movement?
Right. They come in both ways.
Okay.
Usually, however, they back in.
So they essentially drive...
They pull up on Fifth.
On Fifth, and then back all the way in.
And then they back into that right-in-only lane. You know, there's an occasion where they come in the front way too, and the radius, the radii will be the same.
Would you, second question, would you actually consider the potential design change that was mentioned from Public Works regarding removal of that right-in and then just really expanding the one curb cut?
You know, that removal of that right-in will really impede our truck deliveries.
To essentially just the depot or to the whole complex?
To the whole complex. That's where, whenever we have a semi come in, that's where they come in.
Have you, third question, have you actually looked at the opportunity to maybe design surmountable sidewalks or anything like that so that, I'm guessing that deliveries of semi trucks is maybe once or twice a day at the most?
Yeah.
To where it essentially functions as a sidewalk, but as neat, or a thickened sidewalk, but as needed, the truck can drive over it? You know, this, this point was one of the, I think, the last points that we talked about at Cal, and it's a pretty tough condition now as it is. And I think just with the increase in the number of rooms, you're just going to exacerbate some of the issues that you have currently. And I think we're just looking for a way to really improve the public realm while still allowing, you know, as much movement for automobiles as possible.
Absolutely. You know, it's our, it's our wish to improve that intersection for pedestrian traffic as well. However, we don't want, we can't impede the operations of our, you know, it's a very successful event center. So we did consider what Public Works has recommended as far as doing away with the right-in-only and providing 30 feet. We don't see that as a viable option just because of our truck delivery. You know, we've looked at having the curbs where you can drive over them. To me, that isn't that pedestrian-friendly. I would rather do something where we have enough room for that truck to make the movement without driving over a place where pedestrians will be. But we did look at that option.
Commissioner Lukey, here, and then Commissioner Bender.
So I'm just, I was looking at your sheet L4 where they show the truck movement, and I was just wondering if there's a reason why the southernmost curb cut is still, I mean, it's such a large curb cut, but it seems as though the trucks almost move quite a distance, maybe eight or nine feet beyond that? So is there a reason why that one can't be tightened up a little bit?
The southern curb cut, that's the one that we're proposing to go from the current width of 45 to the new width of 35.
Okay, so that would become off the southern side of it, only one come off of the, I'm just trying to figure out where that was.
The southern side of it would be the part of it that would bump out.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. President. When Public Works recommended this alternative option, weren't they aware of the truck movement needs of the site? They're usually pretty keen to like safety and vehicle types, and
Right.
we use similar design vehicles for roads. So I would think that if they were comfortable with the truck movements with the 30-foot curb cut, that they were, you know, imagining that that would accommodate truck movements.
Right. I'm, I'm not 100% sure if they know our operations of the hotel and where those trucks actually go, but they did have the exhibit showing those turning radius.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? If there aren't any more, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have one application before us, a site plan review with five conditions. Would anyone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Commissioner Tucker?
I will move the staff recommendation to get things on the table.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gusselman?
Aye.
Nippe, here?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Tucker?
Aye.
It's five to zero.
All right. And that motion, please. We can move on to item number nine now, and this is the lockup self-storage 701 Seventh Street North, 618 Seventh Avenue North. Ms. Farrar is staff, and we'll ask her for a short presentation.
Good evening, President Brown and Commissioners. And the application that's before you, and I'll just kind of give a quick summary because this looks a little bit different than the last time that you saw it at its second Cal meeting, are for the properties located at 701 Seventh Street North and 618 Seventh Avenue North. So that's these parcels located here. They have frontage on Oak Lake Avenue, Seventh Street North, and then Seventh Avenue North. The applications before you this evening are the conditional use permit to allow an accessory parking lot in the downtown parking overlay district of variance of the off-street parking requirement and loading requirement, and then site plan review to allow a new four-story building. The last time that this was at Committee of the Hall, what was being proposed at that time was a five-story building. The applicant has now decided to move ahead with a four-story building that includes a basement that will have storage areas located in that area. They did also eliminate several applications also that were in front of you the last time that we discussed this, related to signage and other components. So as you can see, instead of looking at eight or nine applications, we are now down to four that we are recommending approval of this evening with several conditions of approval on the site plan review application. One of the major things that transpired since we last talked about this specific site was that the applicant didn't go to a Committee of the Hall meeting with Public Works. And basically, what Public Works said is that they would not allow them to access the site off Seventh Street North. And so what happened was that the applicant needed to provide access to the site off of Seventh Avenue North. So, and this is due to many different types of multimodal improvements that will be made to Seventh Street North in the future, protected bike lanes, et cetera. And so basically, given that the site had another opportunity for access, Public Works did mandate that the curb cut proposed off of North Seventh Street be closed. So the applicant is now accessing the site off of Seventh Avenue North. The configuration of the building and the parking is largely the same. They did not have to make major modifications to the overall configuration based on the access point. Some of the things that they have worked to incorporate, and you can see those certainly in your elevations, but they incorporated sort of clock tower sort of aspect to the building as you come down Seventh Street. They incorporated the patio area for potential retail or cafe space in the future adjacent to the intersection of Oak Lake and North Seventh Street. Some of the issues that we focused on certainly at Committee of the Hall were related to window openings and providing required window openings specifically along Seventh Avenue North. That is one of the conditions of approval that the applicant is hoping to discuss this evening. The applicant has stated that they are willing to incorporate all recommended conditions of approval except for conditions six and seven. So I will kind of focus my presentation on that and close, and then I can certainly answer any subsequent questions. As you can see here, there are certain stipulations specifically to reducing the out, the size of the outdoor space that's located nearest the intersection. There's staff concerns, and our thought on this is that, you know, if there isn't ever a retail or a cafe tenant in this location, you really have an inactive space. So they're willing to provide some additional landscaping and planters, et cetera, at this location. But obviously, much of the interaction that this building has with the street is in this location. So we are really hopeful that they will be able to secure a tenant because otherwise, this, this frontage will obviously be largely inactive. So going to condition six, it's regarding the south elevation of the structure adjacent to Seventh Avenue North. Right now, if you look at the floor plans in your packet, basically, what it's showing is that these are all grade-level display windows. And as we talked about a little bit at the Committee of the Hall meeting, this does not meet the intent of the 30% window provision. So there are actually technically no windows provided along this elevation that allow views into the building. And what this elevation, corresponding elevation looks like is this. So basically what I've done, it's the top portion I've highlighted, this is a south elevation of the building. Again, these are all display windows, so that is a 0% window compliance. We're recommending that the building comply with 30% window requirement in that location. That's condition six. And then condition seven is regarding the 10% window requirements on upper floors, two through four. And I did highlight the elevation in which, the two elevations in which that would apply. And this would be specifically on the west elevation, so just to sort of situate yourself with the site plan. Again, this is the south elevation adjacent to Seventh Avenue North. This is the west elevation that's facing two surface parking lots and then a vacant industrial site that's located here. And then there's a portion of the north elevation also that I will talk about. But this is the west elevation. It's just the second floor that would need to be modified to comply with that 10% window requirement. And then looking at the north elevation, it was actually an elevation that we had to sort of separate. One elevation, one portion of the elevation actually faces the public street, so basically bringing a line down from Seventh Avenue North. It was basically this component of the building was subject to the 30% window requirement. And then in the industrial districts, this portion of the north elevation actually faces the interior of the site towards the surface parking lot. That standard gets relaxed, so ground-floor windows in the industrial districts facing onsite parking lots don't have to meet 30% requirement, but they still have to meet the 10% window requirement. So as a result of that, these two floors, three and four, that are on the, basically that northern part of the building don't comply with the 10% window requirement. So it's just these elevations for condition seven, in this location specifically, second floor and third and fourth on the north. And then again, the full elevation adjacent to Seventh Avenue North, as I mentioned previously. There are a lot of other conditions of approval that are regarding landscaping and reveals on the building just to ensure that it does, that the building doesn't have the blink wall provision issue, making sure that all of the parking spaces are within 50 feet of an on-site deciduous tree, all of that good stuff. In addition, providing a walkway to connect the parking spaces to the principal entrance of the building too, just given their location on-site. So again, the only conditions that I'm aware of, just based on our discussion that they'd like to talk about this evening, is six and seven. So I will close there, but I can certainly provide more detail if you'd like it.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Farrar? Commissioner Tucker?
Yes, just a clarification on the site plan, if you could put that up. There are a lot of dashed lines, and I'm not sure which are the property lines and which are something else. You just draw the property line, particularly on the east side and along Seventh Street.
So basically, what that line is showing is eight feet.
I see. That's the setback line, okay.
Yep.
So how far back are they set from Oak Lane Avenue, I guess we would call it at that point?
At the maximum.
Well, minimum and maximum.
16 and 35, I believe, is what I have.
16 is at the corner of Seventh Avenue, right? Okay. And then 35 somewhere where one of those tables is.
Correct, which is partially why we were recommending that that area be shored up a little bit. Again, just in case there isn't retail activity to sort of shrink the size of that, that plaza in case it just remains inactive.
Okay. So I believe at the Cal, we were asking them to make more public space there. So the 16 feet was something we were looking for, not something that we have to forgive. Clarify the condition five just for me. Would the building outline change or just the amount of landscaping would increase and the amount of patio would decrease under condition five?
Based on my discussion with them, what they're willing to do is put landscape. Based on my discussion with them, what they're willing to do is put landscape islands in the specific locations, so planters with trees, et cetera.
So the.
The, the location of the building would not be changed as a result of those conditions.
And I would hope that we added into there, do you have that, that they will work with you to determine where that goes or?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. That's all, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Farrar? I, I have a question, Becca. Would display windows that are similar to the display windows that are proposed elsewhere on the building meet, count for the 10% requirement on the second through fourth floors?
Essentially, what we said is yes. You know, you, you can't actively see into them, but the, the 30% provision is meant to allow views into the building at street level. So yes, the, they're not actually functioning windows on any of the floors.
All right, thank you. I will now open the public hearing for this item, and I'd like the applicant to speak first. And if you don't mind, please address specifically condition six and seven, since we've discussed this project in detail a couple of times before.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Peter Beck. I live at 4746 Sheridan Avenue South in the city, and I am BRB Development's local representative on this application. With me tonight is Rikif Kiltzer, the Principal at BRW. Larry Smith is his development official at BRW, and we have the architect, Werner Briski, all available for questions. As Becca said, we have reviewed the staff report very carefully and agreeing with all the conditions. We will comply with all the conditions, including the window conditions. If that's the decision of the planning commission, we would like to have that discussion because we think that the, the solution we have on the, in the windows makes a little more sense. But everything else is fine with respect to the lands, the plaza area. As Becca says, the, the concept is to put additional landscaping in there. If, if a tenant arrives and would like additional plaza space, then I think maybe we would come back to, to put the landscaping back, or the plaza back in. But for now, we are in agreement with the condition. And, and incidentally, with respect to that retail space, the commitment that BRW has made is they will use that space for at least five years as additional office space for themselves as they market it for a retail or cafe tenant. If after five or six years they still haven't found a tenant, then they might convert it to self-storage, but will continue to market it for the retail space. But, but hopefully, with the activity that's, that's on the horizon in that neighborhood, it will be a desirable retail space well before the, the five or six years are up. So with that said, again, all, all the conditions are agreed to. On the windows, we wanted to have that discussion. I, I might have the numbers wrong. I think condition number seven is the 10%. And I think this is more of an aesthetic issue than, I mean, the, the request is to approve the building as designed. The windows were grouped as a design component of the project. And again, we think aesthetically it works better, but if the Commission's decision is otherwise, we will comply with that condition. The windows on the south side are a little bit different issue. As we have mentioned in, in our prior correspondence and in the narrative for the project, we, we believe these windows do comply with the site plan review standards. But more importantly, we believe that even if they don't, that alternative compliance is appropriate in this situation for a number of reasons. First of all is what we've done with that front facade along Seventh Street. This is going to be quite an extraordinary self-storage building. Company went to, it really basically changed their business model to make this a more urban self-storage facility, to put that, all that glass along Seventh Street, the clock tower element, and to incorporate another business in their property, which they have never done before. So I think, you know, our feeling is they went a long ways towards alternative compliance with respect to the windows. And from their point of view, the issue with the windows are a couple, including the efficiency of the layout. Again, as, as Rick said at the Committee of the Whole meeting, as we've said tonight, if the Commission's decision is to make, have those have to be windows into a corridor, they can do that. It makes the building quite a bit less efficient, and they have invested quite a bit more on that east facade already, so they would rather not. But more, more importantly, from the, from the city's perspective, if you look at this south facade, what you see happening is these display windows drop down with the grade of Seventh Avenue. Seventh Avenue is dropping from east to west. The display cases have dropped with the Seventh Avenue in order to keep them at a more pedestrian scale. If, if those have to be real windows into a corridor, of course, the corridor will stay at the first floor level and will, and those windows will be getting increasingly higher than the grade to the point where the bottom of the windows will be about six feet above the grade at the western end of the building. And it, again, this is a, I mentioned this to Becca this, this evening. It's an observation that the project architect, Werner Briski, just made at the end of last week as we were discussing this condition and how they could comply with it. You know, his conclusion is it could be complied with, it makes the building less efficient, and, and it does create that anomaly there on the south side as the sidewalk drops away. So that's, that's where we are. I, I think this project's come a long way since the first Committee of the Whole meeting and, and even the second. It's a, it's a very desirable location from BRB's perspective, and we have been to the North Loop Neighborhood Association on a couple of occasions, and they are, are very supportive on both occasions. Both the zoning and planning committee and the, and the board have approved unanimously. It's a service that the neighborhood needs and could use, and we think it's a, a building that would be an asset to that part of the community. So I don't have anything else. As I said, we're all here to answer questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Tucker?
Just devil's advocate, if you had to choose one of the two, six or seven, which would you choose to comply with first?
I think the, that, as I mentioned, the 10%, Rick will stop me, 10% is more of an aesthetic issue. We would rather comply with that. The 30% goes towards the business. It affects the, the efficiency, the cost of the project and the efficiency of the business in operation. So that's, that's the one we're most concerned about.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Tucker?
Is your architect here too?
Yes, he is.
He was gonna talk?
Yeah.
I, I remember at the Cow meeting, we talked about extraordinary public realm, and I want to have you describe that for us. Maybe we used a different word than extraordinary, but it was that sense. So if we are talking alternative compliance, it would be because of extraordinary efforts on the east end.
And, but I think a big piece of that was the plaza.
Yes.
Which staff is recommending be reduced by about half. And again, we will do that either way.
Good evening, Werner Briski, Partners in Design Architects. Basically, a lot of what we've done was at your direction or your suggestion, and I think it has helped the project. One of the things that was a, I guess, a positive outcome out of what we thought was a little tragic was the Public Works discussions about cutting off the access along Seventh Street. But ultimately, that does a great job of separating car traffic from the pedestrian traffic and really making that the, the eastern end of this property a much safer, more pedestrian friendly area. Adding the, excuse me, adding the, the plaza, again, hopefully with an associated retail function at that floor or at that location on the first floor would certainly enhance that. I think the other aspect would be the, the clock tower, the lantern element that we've got on the corner, closest to the street, creates a little bit of an iconic point of view from coming up and down Seventh Avenue, or Seventh Street, rather. I wish those were two different numbers. That gets me all the time. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Commissioner Luke.
Hi. I had a quick question. I was looking at the renderings, and I couldn't tell whether the, the, the windows or the display windows that are shown in, in dark, is that because they aren't illuminated or because they're tinted? Or what is, is it just a rendering's choice and not necessarily representative of what it would look like?
Can you tell me which windows we're talking about?
The ones that look gray?
The, the, the upper floors, the second and third floor windows are spandrel glass. The ones you see illuminated are actually just, are clear glass and display windows. The tower itself is, does not include any display. It'll be actually a two-story space that will be open and illuminated, and then the upper floors are, are backlit, just backlit.
So will they emit any light?
Place panel.
I'm just trying to get a sense of whether or not it would.
The spandrel, the, the spandrel ones, the ones that are showing up gray will not emit light, no.
So the purpose is just to break up the monotony of the facade or what?
I'm sorry?
What's the purpose of them if they don't? I'm just curious, is it?
It, it's just an architectural element. It just breaks up the mass, provides more of the, just more of a scaling element.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Slack?
As it relates to condition number five and the reduction of the, the public plaza, the, the outer space, in the staff report, it's identified 900 square feet. Any sense of, of what that might look like? Because there is a, there is a definitive edge now between public realm sidewalk area and the plaza, which to me, I think works pretty well. And then essentially, you have plaza to the face of the building. You have any sense of, of what the 900 square foot reduction might look like?
Commissioner Slack, what I would suggest is that planning commission give staff and the developers some input on that and what you're looking for.
This is a very quick, very quick rough sketch. The, the red area there is about 900 square feet, 850 to 900 square feet. The blue shaded in areas would be additional. This area here and this area here would be additional landscaping. We would maintain this walk and access with stairs down here, and this is what we would be calling the, the area, the plaza. Again, this is a first attempt, certainly subject to additional design and discussion.
And, and by landscaping, we're not just sad, you're talking about plant materials?
Well, yeah, we actually have a slight raised planter looking at ground cover and some, there's a couple of ornamental trees in there. Again, with the larger area, we'd have to step back and relook at that landscape plan a little bit.
Okay.
Keep in mind that the, the grade actually starts, starts dropping here and drops all the way around the corner here and then continues down all the way along Seventh Avenue.
Commissioner Luke.
Hi, I just another question, because our copies are really tiny, so it's hard to read. But just so I can get a sense of a pedestrian experience walking along the south elevation, I'll avoid saying whether it's Seventh Street or Avenue. Would these at night be illuminated?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be at least safe feeling-ish?
Yes, and we also have, there are also some wall packs. We were suggesting that we've got where the trees are, we were looking at some uplighting to enhance that.
And then for the remainder of the upper windows, are those all spandrel glass too? Or maybe you could just point out, just so I can get a sense of if we're trying to.
Yes, the upper windows, other than the, the front and the back corners.
Corners are.
Yes.
Okay.
Those would be spandrel.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Wittenberg? Commissioners, just a couple of points about windows, and I partly want to make sure that staff and the applicant are not on completely different pages here because spandrel glass would not be counted as, as window area toward the, the 10% that we'd require on upper floors. So I just want to make sure that we haven't been counting spandrel glass toward the minimum window requirement. We, we concede that you don't have to see into and out of windows and that those can be display windows, but putting glass on a wall is, is not a window in our, in our judgment. And then our references we made to windows on the first floor on the south elevation and that if they were to put in windows that would look into a corridor, that those windows at one end would be six feet or more above grade. And I just want to be clear that our per ordinance, we would not be able to count window area toward the minimum if, if any windows, if those windows are above four feet higher than grade. We would have to exclude those particular windows that are above that point.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, are there any other speakers on this item? See no one, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have, let's see, four applications before us, conditional use permit, two variances, and a site plan review. Would anyone like to make a motion on any of those applications? Commissioner Slack?
I'll move item A, conditional use permit, per staff recommendation.
All right, we have a motion and a second on item A, the conditional use permit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Tucker?
Aye.
Five zero.
All right. We have a motion on any of the other items. Commissioner Slack?
I'll move items B and C, the variances per staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tucker?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Five zero.
Right, item D. Commissioner Slack?
I move item D, site plan review, with all the conditions per staff recommendation.
All right, motion and a second, any further discussion? Commissioner Tucker?
I would like to add in the condition five, some of our usual language about working with staff. I know it's implicit because they get review of everything, but in this case, we want more active participation early on, and I, I think it was asked that perhaps the Commission make more suggestions on, on what that additional 900 or so square feet might be. I vote for trees myself.
All right, Commissioner Gisselman?
That'll be an amendment.
That'll, that'll be an amendment, okay. So we, we have an amendment, is there a second to that? All right. And why don't we vote on that amendment all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and Commissioner Gisselman, do you have something to add?
I just wanted to say that I, I would move approval of the site plan review with the exception of condition six, and particularly, I think not only, not only, my suggesting that exception and that, and that instead the project moved forward with the design as proposed by the applicant, particularly not only because of the, kind of the uniqueness of this facility as a storage facility, but also based on how Mr. Beck described and, and the architect described the, the downgrade on the street side of the building and the fact that the, those windows, if they were opened into a corridor, would be, would be elevated. So I'm not sure if, if, if requiring those windows would really, I guess, advance the, the cause of the public realm in, in my mind anyway. So again, my motion for those reasons is that we approve the site plan application with the exception, along with all of the conditions, with the exception of condition number six.
All right, and I will take that as an amendment to strike number six. Is there a second to that? All right. Commissioner Luke, did you want to say something before we?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to talk about it too, because I was wondering that as well. I, I found that a compelling point about the pedestrian experience walking down the sidewalk there. I'm just a little torn because I, at night, if I'm out walking a dog or something, I like light. And so I'm a little bit, the, the idea that those are illuminated is comforting to me, the thought that, especially on the east elevation, that we're calling it, that that it might feel, I don't know, I, I don't know. I guess I'm, I wanted to hear people's input as to whether or not the spandrel glass on that facade should be, I don't even care if it's a display window as much as just that it would be illuminated a little bit, but I'm up for debate. My only thing is if we're talking about eyes on the street and we're talking about perhaps an alternative compliance measure, I, I, A, I do appreciate the gestures on the facade. Yay, big, big improvement. The retail area on the front also, great. I only wish it was almost, would make it easier for someone to lease the space if they had access to a bathroom. to lock their store and go around and hope that they could get into the office of the storage place. So parting thinks that maybe the trade-off to saying you haven't really activated the south elevation necessarily in the intent we were looking for, but by making the front retail space, you created actually more leasable by having a place to use the bathroom, would perhaps be a good trade-off.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Slack?
You know, I just wanted to thank and commend the applicant and the design team for engaging us in this process. You've been to multiple COW meetings, and the design has changed quite a bit since day one, which I think there was a lot of pushback at that first meeting, and so I just want to thank you for that, and I do believe that this is a much better project than what we originally saw.
All right. Going, well, Commissioner Tucker, did you have something to add right now?
You guys probably missed it when I wasn't here. Things went faster. I think this discussion is and was at COW about alternative compliance, and we very strongly suggested that the pedestrian experience along Seventh Avenue wasn't not much, because it's a one-block street dead end going into a freeway, and we were much more concerned about the pedestrian experience on Oak Grove, and asked for a beacon and a setback and public realm improvements, which you have brought us, so I do appreciate that. And I, in the name of alternative compliance, would support Commissioner Gisselman's amendment to delete, is it condition six, because you have so vastly improved the street presence on Seventh Street turning into Oak Lake Park. That said, I very much appreciate Commissioner Pierre's idea about alternative compliance, maybe instead of these windows, you have something that makes the frontage on Oak Lake more leasable and has a bathroom in it. If that's a condition we could throw in there in lieu of, I think that that might make, advance our alternative compliance of making Oak Lake a more pedestrian-friendly place.
All right, well, let's go back to the amendment. We have a motion and a second on the amendment to remove condition number six from the broader motion, and that would then trigger alternative compliance for the window requirement along the Seventh Avenue elevation. And Commissioners, Gisselman and Tucker had cited the uniqueness of the site, the change in grade, and the better pedestrian experience on other frontages for, in support of that. And Commissioner Luke Pierre?
Yeah, I guess I was wondering if we could either amend the amendment or substitute the amendment, that in exchange for that condition, we would require just an additional unisex bathroom for the retail space, if they would be amenable to that as an alternate.
Maybe the applicant would like to address that quickly.
Or its customers.
In that case, I might suggest, if that's of concern, we add that as a sixteenth condition and since, while it is somewhat related, maybe not entirely related. So let's vote on that amendment again to remove condition number six and make the findings for alternative compliance for the window requirement. I think we can just do a voice vote on that, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? That carries unanimously. So going back to the overall motion, we've had a couple of amendments to that. Commissioner Luke Pierre, are you interested in making an additional amendment to address the restroom issue?
Sure, I will add a condition sixteen that requires an additional bathroom or bathrooms to, for the retail space.
All right, we have a motion and a second for adding a sixteenth condition. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we can go back to our broader motion to approve item D, the site plan review. We've had a few amendments. Is there any other discussion on the site plan review? Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo what has been said, but thank you to the project team for being so responsive to the comments. This is a use that, again, was allowed here but had needed some creativity to conform to the important design requirements that we have, so we appreciate that. And I also wanted to thank Ms. Farrar, because you've obviously done a lot of work here as well, and it's really appreciated.
Any other discussion on item D? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Tucker?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Luke Pierre?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Five zero.
All right, and that motion carries. Well, that concludes our meeting for today, so we can be adjourned. We have committee of the hall this Thursday, our next regular meeting is April 27.